Yes, I took broad or broad said. Same terrible. Okay. It's not the basket, but I wonder. Well, it kind of was the same thing.
Seth, you're acting like working right. What's the game I'm playing? Game? Yeah, what is it? No, it's not. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, I like that.
That's great.
See, because it's one of those things. It was on the country. First question. You know, all of this. On a particular scale. Usually the. This is the issue that. Some of these. Maybe this is.
Really, yeah.
Now, the danger for the connected water. Yeah. They're trying to sound. It is something. It's it. There's a way there's somewhere. And you know what? You see that power. Right, right. But see, here's your.
I can't do one.
That's the deal.
Let's call and order the committee of the whole meeting Monday, February third. It is seven oh four P M. Pat, please call and roll. Number.
Here.
On.
Here.
Peter.
Here.
Foltz. Addison. Warren.
Here.
Sorel.
Here.
Sorel.
Here.
Six. Thank you, Madam Bush, and a second to excuse number Foltz.
So.
Tiger. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. First up on the agenda, financial property chair.
Um, so we have talked about a lot of different things with the Arrowhead. Of course, budget and appropriations. And we need to move on that sooner than later. Patrick, you want to talk a little bit about that and what the need is? And maybe Gina, if you can run away David about processes as well, if you think that'd be great.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you recall in reading the Arrowhead management agreement, an additional control mechanism in there was that Arrowhead had to prepare an annual budget and that that budget had to be approved twice in council. So you have extrastation, my pass out, or his email to me, which is the, it's on two sided operators. But then so the first side is the income and expenses. The remaining backside are additional expenses not related to the operator. As far as food, beer and alcohol, that's the management for the back. But if you look, if I could direct you to the second page, which is the fourth page with information. I'm not an economist. And you can look to January through December and then the total at the end of 2020. So you begin to see what we were talking about with golf, you know, being a seasonal operation. So in the months in which there is no golf and there is no pool, January, February, December, January, February, March, those are months in which there will not be sufficient revenues to cover all of the expenses associated with the operations.
Excuse me, do you have something you could put up on the screen? Mr. Osborne, please.
The amount with parentheses is represented, that's how much we would be short that month. So as we look at, say, February 2020, we're expecting that with golf closed and swimming pool open, that our deficit for that month is projected to be $30,200. With the. view of the controller for the operation tends to estimate the revenues by the expenses on the head side. So that's what we were forecasting for the end of February. But as you get to May, when the pool is open and the golf is open, we're expecting a budget of $41,495 surplus above and beyond the $50,000 that's in the operating account. So that would be where we talked about before, where the city would want to claw back the excess numbers. And what we hoped to do is have enough clawed back that when we get to this point next year, December, January, February, we actually got the benefit of those operator funds that we did not get from the previous operators. Had we gotten that, we wouldn't be in this situation of right now. So the end result of that forecast ended 2020 is slightly positive at $14,490. So what we do then is to go through the year. We have a budget and then we give an actual report come from up. And we would compare actual operating performance to what was budgeted to see if we're in line with that, if we're out of line, or are we out of line, what happened? And just maintain that transparency that was being provided us by being able to look into the the bank record to see what money has gone in, what money has gone out, make sure it's tied with what is being purported to us for the budget. As we say in that agreement, that expenditures that are outside of the budget numbers that we're looking at would require senior approval. So that's why it's important that we have this in place. So if you're correct, Madam Chair, that in the last discussion, we talked about establishing the operating account and putting the funding mechanism, basically that started. That's part of what this is tonight is to, you know, have to follow through and get that going. Give you the annual budget. And then we do need, we do need to talk about some capital investment there for repairs. So I can't take into account all that should have, could have, would have been done over the 10, 12 years that the previous operators were there. And these things didn't get done. And apparently we just kind of look the other way, I guess. But the pool, they'll give room. So if you were looking at the pool, there are four rather large holes running through. One is sufficient enough that I could fit through it. And I'm not. And all that debris and water and everything continues to pour through. Those openings get into the rafters and we choose to do nothing and it'll eventually turn into just a complete carenet. Our building department has been down there to inspect that structure and say at this time, rafters are still sound, but sheathing, the bottom of the roof, the shavings, all that needs to be completely replaced. Brian Hill, who's in charge of our building maintenance, believes that's a job that they could do internally as part of the labor code, they just need to buy supplies. So I'm asking, in this discussion tonight, if we do the forward, we've got kind of like two ordinances, the things related to Arrowhead, you know, among these ordinances that we need to move through rather quickly. So that's the pool for the. On the swimming pool itself, the pool, we've added inspected by Hastings. Hastings is who we use for Dogwood Pool. And to give us an overview of where we are, they indicated that pumps were new replacement last year that the previous operators put in, I guess, two summers ago now, 2018. But the skimmers are in need of replacing. Skimmers perform an important function from what Mr. Hill has indicated to me. And when they do not operate at all or operate in diminished capacity, it costs us a lot of the cost of water from the pool. So that means we're putting more water in and every time we put more water in, we need more chemicals because untreated water influences the potency of the pool monitors there. So this would actually, if remedied, would actually help save some operating costs for the pool. So the, this is not a value review, the firm with the Hastings would do this, and the pool skimmers are 16 million. Two other items, we mentioned before the building code, the building department has been facilities, so it's the fire department, it's the health department. You asked some of those issues previously with the health departments, we got them sorted with, but they are still, the building has not upgraded, so the electrical work that needs to be done. And we need to meet compliance with those code statutes. So the electrical code update is $90,000. And then finally, on the main floor lobby, the women's restroom, there are four toilets. The floor is sunk in. The wooden joints beneath it are in need of replacement. The tile is all cracked, we believe that the flange and gaskets and all four toilets are with leaking water through the floor into the ceiling of the basement, causing mold issues rather large. So the estimate that we have for repairing the toilets is $4,000, which includes repairing the floor, self-structured tile, and new toilets. If the toilets could be salvaged, we could use them again, it depends on what has happened underneath them when we pull them up, as far as the gaskets and flames and if there's a crack in the toilet or if it's just the ceiling that needs to be replaced. So I think if you total those four projects, that's $16 million or four, that's $40,000 in capital improvements to this bill pay itself. So regardless of whether you're playing golf or not, people are going in and using our facilities and we need to be, we need to make sure that they're safe and that everything's usable.
Okay. Comments or anything you want to say on that?
Yeah, we were doing, we were these.
Excuse me, your mic needs to be. Mrs. Warren versus Warren. Thank you.
Thank you.
We were reviewing the first, the budget figures today in the office and went through each one of those. Identify the areas of reorganization.
Can you talk a little while? Mr. Osborne, okay.
Okay. Okay. So. Okay, so you need this appropriation of $50,000 to get them later?
Yes.
Okay. So I think we're trying to work out a time, we're meeting this week, right now?
Yes, as Mr. Foltz has gotten back to you yet? Okay. Here's where we're at currently. So Foltz, you are out of town.
I'm out of pocket. Wednesday afternoon.
Wednesday afternoon, yes. Foltz is out of town now, returning, we're not quite sure.
That will be Wednesday night.
Yes, we're, we're in.
People really just have to put it to Monday and we'll have to.
Yeah, works a lot with that. All right, so what day is it going to happen on Monday?
Then Monday we're scheduled for regular.
Regular.
Regular, so, okay, we'll be there.
Okay, Doug, you had something that was really.
I did. So the golf and all the top of the golf, you know, dying industry. I asked Ken if he could help us out and he ran a report, a really thick report I've got this summer here. Anybody's wrong to it. But basically I want to touch on a few bullet points regarding what the golf industry is doing right now. And this is National Golf Foundation, it's very detailed report. But this is really came into the last couple of years. So it's, golf is an $84 billion industry in general. Keep in mind, there's, you know, the golf course and there's the electronic stuff and books and, you know, games and so forth, which is important part of it as well. But the interesting thing I thought was, you know, there were 24 million golfers, was about the level, that climbed to 33.5 million in 2018, which was interesting. Now, in 18, some of the golfing across the country was lower due to the days, the weather. You know, because the weather, if you remember how wet it was, we had a lot of days that weren't really golf course days. So that's why it was down a little bit last year. But what was interesting I thought is the junior golfers last year, they added 2.2 million golfers aged six years old to 17, who played, you know, the golf course and also the off course. 10% of all the golfers were juniors, which was more diverse than ever. And then actually 36% were girls, which was 15% of the golfing population in 2000 versus 36% now. So like my own golf course, I'll tell you what, I'd be talking to the schools and get curriculums on for all those people because obviously there's a lot of interest there. There's an estimate of 2.6 million beginners in 2018, which is up from 2000. And then the interest involved among golfers are an all time high, which is 14.7 million. People saying that they like to play golf, but they haven't really played it, they're just interested. So there's an interesting thing, but the golf course is closing makes this right, if it's played properly, with the food and entertainment and so forth. I'm hoping that, you know, if they pay attention to the statistics, I would definitely be focusing on the young generation. The baby boomers were the big golfers, you know, and I think it just kind of died off a little bit in the generation after them. So the younger folks are much more interested. So I thought that was interesting, I wanted to throw that out to you. It's a big report, and I have the highlights. So you guys are welcome to see it, but I just wanted to say, I thought you should hear that information. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Patrick has one.
Um, just for down to that, I was looking to see if you might move to amend the agenda to include another topic under financial property, which was the supplemental appropriation had nothing to do with Arrowhead. So Gina and I were working on some other things that you all are hoping to see us move forward with that we didn't have budgeted. I'm not sure if we were on the form of at the time we put the budget together six months ago, but here we are now.
Speaking of finances.
Speaking of finances, if you, if you.
I do. If I, I believe that what Patrick is talking about is the motion to deny the question that we talked about earlier.
Thank you, Ben, I, I forgot how big you are. Do I mind, so?
Yeah. You move me amend the agenda, the agenda to apply a clear background on the discussion of supplemental appropriation for documentation. Patrick? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Motion carries? Patrick?
Yeah, so a couple of things that had come up, Gina, I'm not sure about what we already had settled on. But I do have, which included the Arrowhead, was it 320 or 300? Or did it go?
That's the same that I had, I discussed some of the numbers I was talking about.
We're just going to talk about the cell. So. We did, we inadvertently had not been for a couple additional city cell phones. So with my staff, Catherine and Kelly, I like to reach them on the city cell phone first. So you can get the old iPhone models that Verizon gives us for free, iPhone A. It's really easy to pick up the cost of the additional line charge for the calendar year. Professional services, we had, this is the administration, the E file cabinet. And that inadvertently not really included in the budget. And when the invoice came in, we used what we did have incorporated in our budget to pay for that. And we also added two new seats to this and margins for city council and the other sort of law department. Just as a quick overview, what the E file cabinet allows us to do is to electronically store, manage all of our records in a virtual filing cabinet that is backed up to file on a daily basis. So we have that. Because we're backing it up to file on a daily basis, storage and record retention is not really available, concerned. We can store things in that in the cloud. When I was still at the city in Canton, one of the things that they were doing was as they were moving to the cloud, they were not having to look through certain records to determine whether or not they were old enough to cause them to get rid of. Since they were being stored electronically in the cloud, it's under the capacity, they just saved that man hours of having to look through records to figure out what needs to go, not just stay there and store in the cloud. So the clerk's office is really, in my opinion, the diary for that because of the, I think, the lack of being able to store things properly over the years. I think Ben has shown a little map for this program. He's been using it since he started in April of last year. We obtained a scanner for him so we could scan the copy which right in. And it's something that as you build, the database of the information becomes more valuable as time goes back. We instituted this in 2017, and so every record from 2017 onwards, we capture through the electronic file. We don't maintain the paper copy unless it's a contract, original contract. We've begun the process of working backwards in 2017 of certain important maps and incorporating that in. And that's something that we can do there. In addition to the Walsh program of having interns on a regular basis that we're working with, this is an important function that they do is getting this stuff properly scanned and stored.
Correct.
And the law department will have this available as well, so typically able to, you know, and it's optical character recognition, so we can scan it in that way and then take a word and find that word. And so it's really high tech sophisticated. Some corporate insurance agreements that we need to account for. And then we were looking at the Dolly consultant moving into the next phase of that project. Who we did this last year, I didn't budget for it, wasn't sure if there would be a change of administration if there was one, or a change in council, all of the new directions, we kind of put everything at home. Now, it looks like everybody is about to move forward with that this year. So we should put that in the budget and make account for that. And we've also reached out and had conversation with a digital art pack company that relates to interior department and building department. They deal with large pieces of paper that are sometimes three feet by four feet. And to get that digitized and stored electronically, unfortunately, hopefully years of backlog is developed. They definitely able to get caught up in this and that is significant. And they would like to eliminate it and establish a process where every document of that comes in is electronically scanned. So we have the printer in house and we can reprint it from the big capacity, three by four. But just to be able to email the records to, you know, finish it, we install it electronically, it would be a big plus. We don't know if we're moving forward with it, but that's what I did argue we're moving forward with it. We need to budget, we need to budget an amount there. I think if, once we would get this in place, then I think finally all the departments in the city would be under a global file electronic file management system. Please fire that all, all the.
Patrick, is that a one type fee or would that be for the digital art pack company?
Well, we believe it is a initial setup to, we want it in process to be to take all of our stuff that hasn't been done and do it. And then after that, you know, we would have the E file cabinet, a monthly ongoing access fee for the software. But we would be scanning in all the new stuff. So we're talking about, somebody needs to take all the existing files that are just.
Like how many would you say?
Oh, thousands.
Okay.
Thousands, which is. We had, you know, an employee here at one time that worked part time to scan stuff, but in auditing the records, I don't think that it is in the format that anybody understands where it is, what it is. This is what an electronic filing program does. If we're calling it a, if you want a plan review, plan, I don't know, we call it a doc as well. We're going to make sure that they're labeled appropriately and stored appropriately. That's one of the monitoring services that the company does for that, is that they will see the stuff we scan and then look at it and make sure that it's properly, properly stored and that all the file pages are there. And if you can scan something and, or you check them all, you're going to see that they're scanned. And if you can scan something and, or you check them all your, see that they're scanning through all that pages and if not, and then you roll back up, put it on the shelf, how do we know that it's actually accurate? And when you look at the industry, this is all about where, where things are going to be in the next fifty years. We won't be there, but you know, those electronic records will be, and the paper is just, is just way, you know, out of the, uh, around the reality of a several age dinosaur that we don't know how companies will survive twenty-five years from now. That's what they have to do. Backwards to paper. But we'll find it. We take instances that happened in the city in Canton where they had, uh, watermen break into the building. It flooded several floors and unfortunately, court records are in the basement. And the ceiling being way, all the water came down, the town was cracked with, with rust.
It's important to note that engineering and, uh, records on the records retention schedule for the most part are permanent records. Other departments have, um, their obstruction timeline. Most engineers are permanent. It's why they take that so much.
And, uh, I was, I was, when you say that, and, and as a problem with that, as you said, that those files tend to be the vast majority as permanent files. And if that's what we're contemplating, that is saving these files, you know, for, uh, forever, it's better perhaps to have those in the cloud. As you said, that every day versus in a banker's box stored in another location.
And then also, uh, for, uh, he retired, she's been up and been working with us to get, uh, an, an additional dispatch, dispatcher, uh, on the board full-time to, uh, make us compliant with regulations. It requires some dispatchers onsite in the evening, like two, three in the morning kind of thing. And he will, Chief Kemp, uh, who's taken over, agrees with this. The mayor of itself believes it's important that we are operating, uh, clients with that, with requirements. So we would like to keep that budget, but he would, uh, he would come here, as with all this stuff. And we can go into more detail later. The idea was if you wanted to do this supplemental appropriation, move forward with one, the Arrowhead, we got to get together kind of quickly. But this other one can follow the regular course of business. Next three weeks, that. But we can get Frank, uh, Chief Kemp up here to talk more about, more of that and then end this up. I can give you a little bit there, but I don't want to talk on tape about it. I'm going to talk in, in next week.
Right. So we could either budget, do the appropriation for the full amount or just do the Arrowhead stuff on the net. You could break it up.
Yeah, we might have broken up into two separate tracks. One which is Arrowhead related to, to, to the expedition. And the other one, uh, that can follow the, maybe.
Yeah.
Then next week we, then we, then we get it.
Okay.
Do you want to have the first reading on the second, there, part of this too, uh, next Monday?
Yeah. And then.
Can you email Summer?
Yeah.
Of what you just said?
Yeah, I should, I'll be on one, so.
Don't pass. All right, Monday. Okay. Good stuff?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, next up, uh, personnel and safety. Director of administration, our request consideration review of the updated employee manual. What's on the agenda, March sixteenth, for consideration, advice, and action. If you guys will all copy on it. This, I think on Thursday, if you guys all, all have a copy of that.
Yeah, uh, obviously this is, uh, a really important thing. We engaged a consultant, uh, to help us put this together. It's been something that we've tried to get together determinedly for a lot of years, and it is so, it is so all encompassing, a product. And it, it overwhelmed everybody that attempted to try it. So what you have, uh, it's a possible one hundred and fifty page document. Uh, it's been emailed to you. If you don't want to work with email, let me know. We can print out a copy for you. If you didn't want to print out, you know, bottom out to you, eight, ten copies and print twelve hundred sheets of paper. Um, it's obviously a lot to digest, so there's nothing to be talked about here tonight on it. Um, and we want you to digest it over the next six weeks. Call with questions or concerns or tweets or things like that. We can process that determinedly if those are suggestions. And then when we come back on March sixteenth, have something that has been somewhat opining on. And then see if we can keep the ball moving.
In the meantime, uh, law will be reviewing this as well to make sure that you're complying with the home party agreements. The like and, uh, sure Tim will do a fine two things as well. And Gina, I'm actually regular in the summer as well. Make sure it's square. Any questions for Pat, Tim, Gina?
All right, just to put out for, for everyone, uh, if, if they're not aware, the, the law firm that had put this together, Queens and Nelson and Associates, uh, is a premier, uh, firm that specializes in making employment. What has provided us is a, uh, kind of a all encompassing package here that we can work with. And it's a thing that we'll need to keep in, uh, certain in place, like our own, uh, record policy, personal information policy. We'll check for the context for the department agreements and, um, make sure all of the council members and elected officials will, uh, know what changes may be suggested in with, uh, this, this contract. But indeed, as Patrick said, it's all encompassing. One hundred and fifty-two pages without the suggested forms. And so I have printed mine on, uh, forum on one system's paper, but I can still read through it and look for, uh, suggestions. I think administration is looking at as well. We're aligned with things so that we don't have to be talking on the same subjects. And, uh, we don't write over each other, but, uh, it's, I mean, as I said, we're looking at March sixteenth to bring it back so that we can begin discussions on implementing this updated employee manual.
Good. Any questions for Tim? Pat?
Aye.
Yep. Before, uh, we adjourn out of this and head into the special council meeting, Mr. Gianni, I wanted to talk briefly regarding Walsh College.
Ben? Um, two meetings ago now, city council asked to schedule a city council meeting to be held at Walsh University. Um, they have prepared with some dates, and so I am asking council to pick one. Um, the first is March thirtieth, which would be the fifth Monday of March and would be a committee of the whole meeting. The second is April sixth, which would be the first Monday of the month and also a committee of the whole meeting. Um, and that is a last resort date. They also offered April thirteenth, but, um, the university will be on Easter break. And with my understanding, the council wanted the students there.
Yeah.
We do. When's school break for you folks? Are kids in schools? That's a great question.
It's their last.
Usually the last week in, in March, but is it the last week, full week?
I think it's the twenty-seventh or the third.
Okay.
The March.
Okay, so the thirtieth would be, that would be.
Kansas City schools, uh, close, uh, starting March, or twenty-third. Those schools spring break.
Twenty-fourth, so it'd be that then.
And then they'll be, they come back on the thirtieth. And that's for North Kansas City schools.
This is going to be another fall.
Yeah. Good, good. So, uh, so thirty-sixth could work for it. And thirty probably could be, be tough coming back.
Yeah, thirty-sixth.
Last year it is the first. Just so you know, it's right in that same, right, ballpark.
Is everyone good with six?
Yeah.
First Monday.
Good one. Ben? Go back with six then.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Because that'd be a, a special meeting because we'll have a different location.
Uh, do you want to, before the, before I put it on the list, do you want to make sure that that's April sixth is a good date?
Um, yeah, I'm just going to wait to formally vote until, uh, confirmation from all, my meeting was going to say.
Okay, good. I just put a reminder in there afterwards. All right, uh, see if there's no, nothing more on this agenda. I'm going to take the motion to adjourn the committee.
So moved.
Sorry? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion carries. We are adjourned. And I'd like to call to order the special council meeting, Monday, February third, seven forty P M. Ben, you might call the roll again. Member Volt?
Here.
Member Fontaine?
Here.
Member Peter?
Here.
Member Foltz is absent. Member Wyer?
Here.
Member Schreit?
Here.
Member Schreit?
Here.
Six, ready? Take the motion, second to excuse member Foltz.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion carries? Okay, at this time, if you wish to address council, um, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. As this is a special council meeting, I ask that comments be, uh, specific to the ordinance on the agenda two dash twenty.
Chuck Austin, one three oh seven Frederick Street, southeast, Fort Canyon, Ohio. Since we have spent tens of thousands of dollars on our audio system, I'd like to see dinner. Somebody amp up the volume. You can't out here. This is no improvement than what we had at city hall.
Mr. Austin, how does this pertain to the paving project we have?
This is the meeting tonight I'm talking about.
We're in special council meeting. If, would you like to comment on the repaving, replacement, repair, preventative maintenance of certain city streets?
I'm commenting on the fact that you can't hear out here.
You heard that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything? We're going to get it on the agenda tonight. Okay. Seeing none, I'm going to take the motion in the second to read by title only. Second reading ordinance two dash one.
So moved.
Sorry? All in favor?
Aye.
I can close. Motion carries. Tim?
The ordinance authorized by the director of administration in the city of Fort Canyon advertise and receive bids. Order the specification is now in file in the director's office and authorizing the mayor on border control rules. Amendment to contract for the resurancing, repaving, replacement, repair, and preventative maintenance of certain city streets and alleys. And we turn it the same to the emergency.
Thank you. Chairman Fontaine?
Uh, yes, we talked about this last week. We'll try to get a, uh, list of streets together. And Pat, if you want to touch on this a little bit, you know, we, we just want to get the budget, you know, this too. The only, one other question I had is, I remember you were talking about the gas tax, that there may be some additional dollars coming. And I didn't know if someone could look into that and actually see if it's, the budget already, or is that additional dollars coming? So I wasn't clear on that. But Patrick, if you can speak on this for a minute, that'd be great.
Great. I just wanted to make, uh, council aware of the kind of process that we follow to get to this point. We never really kind of talked about that. Uh, so from, uh, perspective, uh, the engineer works with his team, uh, to figure out what, what streets, you know, are in need of repair. That also involves a digital inspection. And, uh, from that, it also takes into consideration, uh, how streets are in proximity to one another. And for a contractor who's bidding on this, a big portion, if you look through the specs and all, a big portion of this is moving equipment to the area and how much, how many places do they have to move around to? The more that they move around throughout the city, pick up fifteen, twenty streets that they do, the more that's up. So in some respect, if it happens to be that there are streets that need to be repaired, whether more clustered together, it makes sense to try to get as many of those as possible because we don't have to pay every time then to move it from one part of the ward or one part of the city to another. In addition, he also looks at, uh, what other big projects are going through. So we've got Applewood, that's a county project. And with the contractor company that stood bad, it's likely going to be bidding on our project. And they historically have been one of the most competitive ones. And we believe that this, because they will have already have equipment in place, it will put them in a position that they can get an even better bid because the equipment's already there. They don't have to pay to get it there, move it around, and then be stored there anyway. So we look through the list. That's kind of why this year seemingly a cluster of streets in the northeast end is because we're doing Applewood. And that is why, uh, in this system, we need some of the ones that are up in that area. But in addition to that, to try to balance it out, we look at other parts of, of the city. And so there are some of the other wards as well. And, you know, that changes from year to year depending on the needs. Uh, we've had a mile or two so far. Some would say not a meter at all. And we don't know what that will push us through the next five years. We could have, uh, if, if we turn it reverse, it could be simple as it might give way, that would require, you know, an accelerated schedule. Um, and so what we look at when we do these things out there is really try to look at, you know, how many miles of road are we going to do? Because the list could change. So, uh, that is what we ask for in the ordinance is that, uh, as far as it's bidding out, we're not going to specify which streets, we're telling you which ones are going to do, but what happens if something comes up that we've got a moving bad road and somebody else could, we would have to take a fly on one of the other streets or, or this one up there. It's kind of directed everybody to try to spend it as soon as we can be able to move and have that flexibility. So I went out and looked at those streets myself and, uh, you know, did somebody say, well, it doesn't look like a road that you defined in Long Beach. That's right, it doesn't. And we don't want it to look like a road in Long Beach because that's going to be a lot to prepare. So why this is going to make this. Uh, what we don't want is we don't want to turn every road into a weather road. And the weather we rebuilt last year, Route Paco, that one was.
About seven hundred and fifty thousand?
For one street. That's our, our budget this year. We're on this project here for the general street repaving. We're estimating, uh, on the general, three hundred and forty-seven, six fifty.
So, so that's like half of that, one red project, uh, total revenue.
Yes, exactly.
So the more, you know, when they start to show signs of fatigue, it doesn't make sense to let them go completely. Uh, because the cost to just, you know, walk, you know, two inches and put down the rest will be substantially less, uh, than rebuilding the entire street. Patrick?
Yeah.
So, so like in the years past, sometimes like the council members at large or, or council people, they pay close attention to their subdivisions and let us know if they see something we missed so that we can address it. Last year, you know, we got some really good pricing on the roads. So we were able to pick up three, like if we did, uh, three extra roads that weren't really on the list. Uh, like Rose Lane, I know, you know, we got hit and it was sunburned on the other ones. Uh, so, so I'm, I'm hoping that that happens then. Someone is verifying the gas tax. If that's in the budget already, did we get any of that or how do we get that money? I think it was supposed to be like three hundred thousand a year additional to the budget for the roads. So man, if we could dig that in, man, make a look into that initially. Thanks. So, uh, this is the same process that we followed last year. We had crews in the area who worked in, uh, off of Bradford. And, you know, we could have, it made more economic sense to do those, no cul-de-sacs while we were there. While all the equipment was there, we had the great. while all the equipment was there, and we had the great difference. Than to come back two years later to do one little call to stat and then leave. It just, it doesn't make economic sense to look at it in that way. So what we track is that you, something that doesn't involve any political considerations. The mayor's not involved in this, unless, and I haven't had an early conference. This is something that the specialists sit together, look at, and vote, bring out. And it's up to you to decide whether that's something you agree with, or you want to see a change. Or Mr. Fontaine says, we always like to find, find more to do, more streets to do, and certainly go that approach. So that's what you have before you, is what we feel is the most economical, efficient way to get this job done in the time we're under. It still provides some balance to get any more. Thank you.
Man, I thank you for those comments. So to the interest of full disclosure, the majority of these streets are in Ward Two, where the mayor happened to his eye. And I was very aware of the possible optics. And I took Rob and Pat to task on Friday, and had them explain to me in detail why. One of the other things that Rob mentioned is subdivision we're doing in the northeast, you're grinding only to, what, an inch? Maybe an inch and a half, whereas potentially, if we waited a couple more years, we could be into a full-depth paving situation where we're going the full six inches, and maybe we're hitting below, if the sub base gets wet, you know, like wet, totally shot, and the wall had to go. So you could turn all that into consideration, and also basic effect, the equipment is going to be there.
Absolutely, yes.
You certainly should recommend someone this way, so we appreciate that.
So like, the inch and a half millim, you know, that you do, so there's, when I went through the sanctuary, I was looking, and there's a few spots that look really more than an inch deep.
Absolutely.
So the contingency is what?
Yeah, we have a contingency in there, but after we build that inch and a half, we take a look and see what we're up against. And if we have to, and we did it on a couple spots on that late season page that you just mentioned, we'll go back in and build three more inches, and put three to the base asphalt up. The last thing we want to do is put inch and a half on top of that, that's just...
Yeah, that's, thank you.
Yeah, so we'll take a look, and we hopefully, hopefully don't have, you know, run into a lot of those, it'll be pricey. But we're in, we're in, we're in.
Well, I drove that as well, there was only really two spots that was really, really bad, that looked like it could, it could be down to some three inches.
Right, right.
Okay. Another question about that, and I understand what you're saying with the price of everything, because when you guys sent this out, I looked at it, and I go, oh my God, what a subdivision, how could this possibly be? So I went out there, and I drove every one of those streets, and they're awful.
Yeah.
So my question is, how old is that place? That place is not that old.
Two thousand and five.
Okay, that's two thousand and five, and every one of those streets are like crap, like spider legs.
It, it's...
And so my question then is, do we, where do we take control of that? I mean, the developers do these things, and now they're on phase, what, three or four? What are they on now?
Three.
Okay, so are we expecting these things? I mean, you weren't even here for that, but are we expecting this having to happen like this? Wait, was that wave down, or is that electric?
Phase five.
Okay.
Five.
So are we...
Rob, what's the normal life?
Yeah.
It's... How they're handling the amount of traffic? The sub base conditions in the wet, swampy areas, it's all sand ground for a hundred feet below the street, the amount of traffic. But our typical section should easily last fifteen years and not fail till they have, so we're about there.
Yeah.
There's other subdivisions, you know, some of the newer phases in Montcello, I can scratch my head, and why are these so bad? They're only six or seven, I guess. But yeah, phase four, my staff didn't do the inspection out there. And, you know, I told the zone in my office, the project manager, I want you out there a lot, because, you know, it wasn't our dollars to put it in. It was our dollars to maintain it for six years. And if the contractor were to skim, we're going to pay for it.
But you think the thirteen years it's gotten is reasonable?
It's reasonable, but I guess like, in my mind, it should have held up better. But I wasn't there to see the construction, to see what the sub base was, and obviously that area is pretty wet, you know, we're modeling, so.
As far as the other, I don't care if they're all, and there's a couple others I'd like to see, I'm not too about those, but it's all throughout the city. But the new financing, the funds towards the end, and so...
Yeah, absolutely. The list was, we just first run on the office, we came up with over a million.
Yeah.
Well, one of the other, one of the other aspects of that conversation that we had was, for example, Seven Street, we're here in front of high school. It's three thousand cars a day.
Well, that's right.
You go through there, it's horrible. However, that road would be, is a perfect opportunity for possible state funding.
Right, we had a grant, CDBG grant, to help us with Seven Street last year. That was federal HUD funds. And then when we awarded the grant, we were awarded two hundred and fifty thousand based on that area showing up on the latest little modern income mapping that comes out. And then from the time it gave us the grant to the time the money was available, HUD updated the maps. And because it's good for us, that area disappeared from the HUD, Eleanor mapping, so we lost the grant. So we looked at doing something this year, and then we thought, wow, what the school district is going through, and what their long-term plan is, we just kind of held off until their plan developed. The last thing we want to do is go in and do a lot of work, have a full reconstruction. And then we do all that, and they come in, well, we've like a third of them, so...
You're talking about Seven Street and shit?
Yeah, so that's another thing we need to look at.
If we're going to do dogwood, make that place something very special, we want to crosswalks and everything out there. Brandon talked about that, that's going to be a, hopefully, a showplace, where people come into town, brick crossings, and people know where they're going out there. So they will get that...
Some of those larger thoroughfares, you know, they're good candidates for grants.
Yeah.
And then, you know, maybe we want to come up with ten or twenty percent of total cost, but, you know, for subdivisions, it's pretty tough to get a grant. Sanctuary, Montcello, or...
I'm just trying to...
So, Rob, you have, we have grants, like we have East Hill, Morrisfield, Pine View, Portage, Pittsburgh, Barnet, and there's... And we have a lot of our streets that are not on the plan, that are, you know, we're getting worked on and re-dos, and we have grants for a lot of this. The other thing is, like, there's a section of London that's really bad, we've been talking about for two years now. But they're trying to wait till, they don't want to do it till they can get the utility replacement and bring that water line up. You know, so there's a few little things in the hot bird for in the next twelve months that are going to get blacked out. We really, really need it badly, but we don't want to do it till the utilities get updated. Which, Rob, we kind of talked about that a little bit, we want to make sure we're dialed into that, and so that we can... Because like I said, everybody uses the streets, it doesn't matter what ward it's in, everybody uses them. You know, and any chance we can use polymer, you know, on the busier entranceways and things, I think we should spend a little extra money on polymer, especially on, you know, the re-dos.
Yeah, Apple Grove and Portage this year are absolute problem.
Thanks for your time.
You're good, Rob.
In light of the administrator's recommendation, comments by Members Sarett, preparing additional streets, and move that we amend ordinance two dash twenty twenty to strike these first recital, which references Exhibit A. And in section one, we strike the phrase as more fully described in Exhibit A. So this way the administration can make its adjustments accordingly without the need to return, re-amend this ordinance.
Sounds a lot of... Outside motion, is there a second? A second, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, uh, the Pat? Need a motion to adopt the first reading as amended. As amended, yeah. The second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. We have a motion in a second to suspend the rules of council for three reads.
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, and finally, a motion in a second to adopt under suspension of the rules ordinance number two dash twenty as amended.
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. As this is a special council meeting, that concludes our agenda, our ten motion loser. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Megan, you're famous. No, I was actually trying to get the person.